Good afternoon, the time is, the date is September twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. This is the meeting of the Public Safety Meeting, the time it is now twelve thirty-six P M. Today, I am joined by Councilor Letterman, who's on the call. I'm also joined by, by T J Planty, School Superintendent, Dr. Warwick. So, listen to, uh, excuse me, my apologies. Pat Roach as well. To, I, just for the record, Councilor Woodfield will be joining us a little late. Her father is in the hospital, but she will be joining us today as this is a, a joint meeting of the Public Safety and the, Finance Committee. I also see that I have, I believe, a school principal, Mr. James McKinnon. Good afternoon, sir. For Sumner Avenue School.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, thank you for joining us, sir. And so, as I said, this is a joint meeting of the Public Safety and Finance Committee. Today, we're going to be talking about the order of land taken for sixty-five Sumner Avenue, which is the old Friendly's. Before I turn it over to you, fine gentleman, just to give a quick recap, recap to the best of my understanding, as to the matter at hand today, we're going to be discussing the old Friendly's takeover. Before I go on, I do believe this is being recorded, and I also have several community members from the Forest Park Civic Association. So, welcome to all of you. So, by way of backgrounds, as we all know, Friendly's, sold the, the property sixty-five Sumner Avenue back in September of two thousand and twenty for six hundred thousand dollars. Apparently, according to public records, it was assessed seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the city is making, wants to take it over by eminent domain for the amount of one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that's what I think is what we're going to be talking about today. I think today, it will make more sense to, if you agreeable to a superintendent, perhaps we can start with you, sir? And you can give us a little bit of background, what the intention of the property is from a school, from a school perspective, and then we can talk about the finance with T J. If, would you like to go first, Superintendent, sir?
Sure, Victor, thank you, and I'd like Pat Roach to come on with me and jump in. He's been in, in Jim McCann from the school.
Absolutely.
But the history going back is when they, they had a S B A project before M S B A to redo Sumner Avenue School. They put a significant addition on. They never bought the appropriate property to accommodate the parking, the arrival and dismissal that a school would need. So, we've been running the school for the last, I'd say this was probably twenty, twenty-five years ago, without the space to properly execute arrival dismissal and parking for the staff. You didn't have anywhere near the number of parking spots you needed to, to accommodate visitors and staff. So, staff has been working very hard to accommodate that. Friendly's was nice enough to let us use the whole back area of the parking lot for a number of years. And I know Pat had, with different owners have had, has had some arrangements relative to us paying for some of that space. But without that, we, we couldn't have run the school. How that happened years back, I, I can't, I can't speak to it. But, you know, now when we're, we're doing projects, we make sure there's enough of a land taking so that you have the space to do what you needed. They put a huge addition on the school and then take the, the land that would have, would have been required to, to operate a school effectively and have enough basic parking. So, we're seriously, serious shortage from the beginning, and this land is really needed for the space to, to accommodate those needs. You know, you're right on Sumner Avenue, so besides everything else, you're right on a main thoroughfare. So, when you get busing and cars in the street, it has a negative impact on the neighborhoods. If you had more space, we could accommodate the situation much better. But without that parking, we wouldn't even be able to operate the school. People would be off parking on streets around there and things like that. That would be, I'm sure, completely unacceptable for the neighborhood.
Superintendent, if you allow me, before I go to my question, would I to recognize Finance Chairman, Councilor Woodfield? Good evening, good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
My prayers are, would you, would your father, sir, my man? Superintendent, so how many more parking spaces are we talking about, the addition of?
I'd have to have Pat Roach and Jimmy help me with that, the exact amounts.
Sure.
So, Sumner Avenue School is short about thirty to forty parking spaces, and that, that's about what we utilize in that facility. And I believe the facility holds eighty-two parking spaces.
Okay, that's not counting for the pickup and drop off for the students, right?
That's not counting pickup and drop off for students. The parking lot allows us pretty helpful logistics in order to be able to get cars off of Sumner Avenue.
Right.
Um, road during those peak times of day. If anybody's driven down Sumner Avenue during that time, you can, you can understand what you're talking about.
You don't have that space to get those cars off Sumner Avenue when the bus is off. You're going to have such a traffic problem there every day that I think the neighborhood's going to be very frustrated.
Right, right.
Counselor, but I think I might have missed something. What's happening right now? Like, is there an expansion going on or what's happening with parking right now? Because Sumner Avenue School's been there for a while.
Well, they've been letting us use the parking lot. Tracy, the former owner, let us use it, so we were using it for staff parking.
Okay.
So, that was tremendously helpful. Without that, we'd had forty or fifty staff members trying to park on streets around the side of the school. There was never, there was never enough land for the expansion they did and the proper parking for staff. It was back in the mid-nineties, and I, I just don't know what happened. It was before the Mass School Building Authority. It was an old School Building Authority project, and that never should have been approved because the space was inadequate. So, it's been working over the years only because of a positive relationship with Friendly's and, and, and those parking spots for staff. But again, because it's so tight, if we're building a school now, we look for a lot more land. You have to get cars off the street, you have to get buses off the street, or you completely block up traffic. And now you're on a major thoroughfare doing that. So, that's been a problem right from the beginning, but at least we had enough parking spots using the Friendly's spaces.
Gotcha, and then, um, did, did we already talk about the finance of it or not?
No, Councilor Woodfield, so what I'm thinking is, oh, now we are focusing on the Public Safety side of it.
Okay.
And in the second session, I want to focus on the finance, and then I will let you take over that aspect. So, speaking of the Public Safety, Superintendent, I have a question for Superintendent Pat. Superintendent, how is that school itself?
The, the, the school is run by Principal Jim McCann, who's, who's on here, and they absolutely do an incredible job. They've always had a very, very positive academic achievement and just done a tremendous job over the years.
How old is this school?
How, how old? When was the original one built? I'd say the original one was built in the early nineteen hundreds to nineteen twenty era.
On this building?
And, and the addition that was put on under S B A was, I believe it was mid nineteen nineties. Would that be right? Yeah, Jim, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, Superintendent, am I correct with this, with this statement that part of the problem that we face, not only with that location, but throughout the city? And actually, I would say to the whole Commonwealth is that we have a lot of old school stock throughout the city. And the needs back then, a hundred years, were completely different than the needs that there today, completely different society. Is that correct, sir?
That is, that is correct. And then, in this case, in the mid-nineties, when they approved a pretty massive addition, because they needed the school space at the time, the space for seats, they didn't do the land taking that should have been done at the time to accommodate what they were putting in there. So, it was ill-equipped to begin with, and then you put up a massive addition and, and you don't increase your land taking to accommodate the appropriate space. So, it's created a problem for the staff at the school from the time we put the addition on. But it was always a challenge. It wasn't built for today's needs.
Right, yeah, it's kind of catching up to us, so, okay. Uh, Pat, if I ask, so, if, uh, it's going to create an extra thirty to forty extra parking spaces, he has the ability to hold eighty-two parking spaces total. So, how many buses are we going to be fitting in there at any given time? And what will the, what would that look like? Well, first, if you could tell me, or actually, maybe to the path or the school principal.
I'm happy to answer it, so.
How many, how many school buses?
So, as of right now, we have the buses queue around the school building itself. If, if we're able to acquire this property, we were going to work with D P W Director Chris Signoli to actually do an full engineering study of the parking lot along with the Sumner Avenue property and how we could redesign it in a way that would best utilize both facilities.
And that hasn't been done yet?
No, because we don't have control of the property. We're just paying to lease it right now with the fear that it's going to be sold any day.
Okay, and very well. And, uh, Principal McKinnon, is anything you want to add to that statement, say anything?
No, it's just that we have, you know, we only have sixty-eight spots with three handicap spots, and we have almost a hundred staff members working here, including the kitchen staff, so it can be problematic.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, I keep calling you Superintendent, I recall you as Principal. I, I, I do want to acknowledge that that little strip there of Sumner Avenue is extremely problematic. It's extremely dangerous. There's been a lot of accidents. I've been getting a lot of complaints about parking spaces over there. It is, it is an absolute challenge, but also it's a real public, uh, public safety issue. And the last thing that any of us will want is for anybody to get hurt, go for a baby child to get hurt. So, maybe Superintendent, maybe this question's for you, sir. So, I see the need for, obviously, improve the parking situation and to improve the, the drop-off and the pickup for the, for the kids. But why take over the whole property and not half the property?
You, you should have had the whole property to begin with, Victor. The, the land that you have that school on is completely adequate, inadequate for today. Plus, you got to remember, your facility is on a main thoroughfare where you have the highway coming off. So, you really need all the property because just the parking spaces at least accommodates the staff. But it, there's no way, when we're talking about public safety, and you're so right on that, that it's the present situation for arrival and dismissal is safe for our kids or appropriate for the neighborhood. It's absolutely unsafe. You need all that property, and then you need a design team to design it so you can actually get that to flow and be a much safer environment for the kids.
Got you. I'm not, if you allow me, I'm going to change gears for a second. Unfortunately, Councilor Woodfield has that, uh, primarily issue she's attending to. So, and she's going to be excusing herself in a little while. But I, I would like to give her the floor to talk all the finance aspect over again, then we can go back to the public safety aspect of it. So, Councilor Woodfield, floor is yours now.
Thank you, Councilor Davila, um, this chair. Um, I just want to know what the financial plan is, and we can ask questions from there. Um, I don't know if Pat or T J.
Sure, I'll, I'll take that one. So, back in June, we can, the City Council just set aside just over one point one million dollars for the potential eminent domain taking for the old Friendly's. That was sent to committee, or that passed, but the eminent domain was sent to committee. We're going to be asking the council to take it up again in the October meeting to do it for the friendly eminent domain part number, which is one point one two five million, I believe. We had an appraisal done a couple of years ago, it was around seven hundred thousand. Then we had an updated appraisal done this past spring, which moved up their appraisal to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. And they had an appraisal done that had the property valued at one point three million. We figured since we didn't want to go tie up all of our time with a hostile taking, that we'd do a friendly eminent domain taking and split the number in the middle and meet in the middle and avoid having to go pay lawyers' fees and damages if we brought it to court.
Now, where were you asking for this funding to be transferred from?
Well, we already moved money to be set aside in a, you know, special fund that we set up to, to acquire two properties. One of which you guys have already voted on, which is that, uh, a lot, a lot next to the Civic Center Garage. And this was the second part of that, was to acquire this Friendly's.
Okay, and, um, but where was it transferred from originally?
Free cash, it was transferred free cash into a special fund to pay for the, the eminent domain costs.
So, you're going to offer one point two million, is what you're saying?
Uh, one point one two five, I believe, is the number, is what we've agreed upon with the seller. Uh, subsequently, they have two interested buyers or long-term leasers, I should say, not buyers. Uh, one is a dry cleaning company, and the other is potentially a restaurant. The long-term lease is something that they would really like to do because it's better for them financially. However, they said they committed to the city that if we can agree to the, we go for the agreed-upon number, they'll just sell it to the city without any, you know, having to deal with going to court and fighting over hostile taking.
Okay, and so that's the only fees that will have to be covered during the process, or are there any, anything?
There's no relocation related to this one. They don't have anything to relocate. They would just turn over the property and allow us to figure out the best use. Now, I'm not married to any particular use. I know the school department has a few ideas that they could look. And then, but we certainly can meet with the Civic Association and other members to talk about what their, you know, what they would like to see happen to the property.
Well, one thing I would like to see happen with the property is to get the cars off of the street during the snow time. And I would love if they could, um, use that parking lot to be able to do that, some of the residents that park on the street. Because there really nowhere else to go.
Hundred percent. I've already talked to the mayor and Chris Signoli at the D P W about that, allowing them to use it for overnight parking during snowstorms.
I mean, this to me is a no-brainer, so I don't really have any, um, I don't have anything against this proposal. I support it. I don't know what, was it, did it go to my committee? Did it go to finance or?
Uh, yeah, we had, we had two, uh, we had a committee meeting, and then we had an executive session on it before we could talk about the proposals. So, we've had a.
And then it went back to committee, but did it go back to finance? Because I don't remember it coming.
No, no, this is where, this is where it ended up, so we had.
Yeah, what's going on for you, Counselor?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in August, Councilor Davila sent it to the Joint Safety and Finance Committee.
Okay, so this is the committee meeting.
Yep, this is it.
All right.
Very well. I support it, but I do. So, wait for, sorry, allow me to, please, to, uh, recognize Councilor Hurst for just just.
Oh, he's been here, and Councilor Letterman, and I just wanted to give, I give opportunity to ask any questions that, um, they have, if they have any. Because for me, it's, I'm fine with it, um, I support it, and it makes sense. Counselor Letterman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and, and Councilor Davila as well for calling the meeting. I, I think there were a couple of questions that, that I certainly received from neighbors and constituents, and also some, some concerns I had on the financial side. So, let's, maybe some of it goes to the financial side, some of it goes to the use. So, let's stay on the finance for a minute. So, T J, how, how much did the city purchase this? Or how much did the original investors that the city wants to do the deal with? How much did they purchase the property for, and when did they?
That, I'm not sure exactly the timing, but they purchased forty-four friendly buildings across the, I don't know if it's across the country or across Massachusetts. And they just described the value of this purchase of around six hundred thousand. They said the value is probably a little bit higher, but when they would bought the, uh, prop, all the properties, they had to like kind of set a number for each one, and they wanted their Eastern Mass ones to have a little higher number so they could, uh, turn around and sell those for a larger profit. So, uh, when I asked them about the amount, they basically said it was a number out of a forty-four Friendly's purchase. So, um, they said, don't, don't read too much into just that six hundred thousand number.
So, what's, what's our current, our most recent appraisal on the property?
Ours is nine twenty-five is our most recent appraisal, and theirs is one point three.
And what, how much are you seeking?
One point one and change.
Okay, we'll come back to that. On, on the use side, I think the, the concern that I heard was the neighborhood had long envisioned an economic use for the building, and the use that was brought forward with the taking was for administrative offices for the virtual school, which was the first folks had heard about that. So, is the plan to put virtual office, or offices there for the virtual school, or is the plan to R F P the property?
So, we're open for anything. We're not married to any particular idea of what the property should be used for. What's stated in the, in the eminent domain taking is just a couple of concepts for government use. But we have no issue if we determine that we want to figure out some other use for it and go out to R F P or have Tim Sheen's crew, um, you know, put it out to bid or whatever. We're, we're not married to anything.
It sounds like, it sounds like the, to solve the traffic problem, you really need use of the entirety of the parking, though. How, how will that, how will that measure with a potential reuse in the future?
So, that's what we want to do the study through the D P W on, because, um, you know, when we originally looked at it, I don't know which council raised it, we only looked at taking the thirty or forty spots and just kind of the back corner. But upon advice from council said that it's, you know, you're going to pay a premium for those parking because now you're going to have to pay the owners for a loss of use because they're not going to be able to do what they would otherwise be able to do with all the parking. And so, Tom Moore advised that just take the whole parcel and not try to divvy it up because taking the parking, you'll end up paying more. Having said that, um, I have to wait for Chris Signoli's kind of come back to talk about if there's a better way to do it. And then I know there's ongoing conversations with the superintendent and Pat Roach about whether it's the virtual school or the early education, as what Pat Sullivan was raising, and there's a whole host of things for governmental purpose that we can do. And I do recognize that the Civic Association and others, you know, want something, potentially want something other than that. And I'm happy to talk to them.
So, I think that's, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not against us being in control of the site. Um, because I actually think that potentially gives us a broader opportunity in the future to make sure that the ultimate use is one that's compatible with, with the vision for the area, as opposed to just being kind of at the whim of an Eastern Mass investor. Um, I just want to, I want to make sure that we're, we're consulting the neighborhood before that decision is made. And I think that's why, the way the order was written, uh, why we saw some initial concern in the beginning. So, I think if there's a commitment to meet with the Civic Association to, to work out either an R F P or a conclusion, or arrive at a conclusion that's, you know, agreeable to everybody, then we could be in a better position. On the numbers as they stand now, I mean, this is a little bit of a different description of, uh, of where we are than what we had when the order first came forward. I think the way I was looking at it when it first came was, you know, there was a six hundred thousand dollar transaction, and we were looking at, you know, double that on the sale. You know, I, I'll want to look at the appraisal before we vote and try to get an understanding of how that all worked out. I suppose, you know, if the appraisal's at, if there are appraisals at nine hundred and their appraisal's at one point three, if we look at how much it would cost us ultimately to take it for less, we might, you know, if the decision is we want to take it, it might end up making sense, but I'll, I want to look at all that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have it to share what I can share because that's all that went part of the, uh, the calculus of making that decision. Uh, and now they have two offers that they're, they're ready to entertain. They just want to see where the city's at to know if they want to continue with this or go down that other road. I personally want us to control the property because I'm not sure we want a dry cleaner there. I'm not sure we don't. I don't, I just haven't had any conversations with anyone beyond what we're having now.
Right, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give other folks a chance, but those are, those were sort of my primary, because as number one, we get the best deal possible. Number two, we get a use that's agreeable to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think I'm a little bit confused as to when the forty-four big Ys, like the year, not the entire date, the forty-four were sold or purchased. I don't know what that agreement was about.
So, that, so the, the guy that, uh, the people that own the Charles River Realty, uh, the Boston area bought forty-four Friendly's across the Commonwealth when they are closed. And this is one of them, and, um, that's why. So, they, they're basically bought them all, they auctioned off everything that was inside of them, they salvaged what they could, they sold ones that, you know, were property for other reasons, and this is just one of their investment, uh, part of the investment portfolio.
So, when did that happen?
I don't have a date, I can get that, um, a couple of years.
Two years ago?
I didn't, I would imagine it was probably two to three years ago.
So, they bought forty-four properties?
They bought forty-four Friendly's properties when they went out of business.
I'm sorry, on the background noise, I'm, I'm with my dad.
It's okay.
Right now, um, I'm trying to listen to both. Okay, so they bought forty-four properties, and they bought them in a package, so that's normal, like when you wholesale to get them cheaper, right? That's normal, but that doesn't really affect the value, too much of value, still the value, even if you buy them wholesale or not, like you can buy.
That's why we had two separate appraisals.
Right.
Done is to tell us what we think the value is, and then they had their own appraisal done so they could see what the value was, and then we met in the middle between the two appraisals.
So, for me, it's like, um, for me, everybody buys wholesale to make a profit, right? So, that's usually what the intent of buying properties wholesale is, but it is not really based on what the value of the property is. You buy wholesale, you sell for more to make a profit. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear because, you know, if I bought wholesale, I want to try to make as much as I can off of those properties as possible, right? So, um, I don't really have a problem with the valuation or meeting in the middle. I think I didn't know about the virtual school, I don't think, or I don't remember hearing about the virtual offices there. I just want to make sure we are not congesting the area with more vehicles because it's already a safety issue over on Sumner Ave, and, and that end of Sumner Ave is congested. And also, I want to make sure that we have a location where folks can park during snow days because that's where I get complaints, like there's nowhere for us to go. So, they get told, and then there's things happening where they have to pay more money than they have, you know?
The urgency for me was just to deal with the parking, and everything else was secondary. And that's why we brought it in June, and luckily, when we met with the landlord, Pat Roach and I, they agreed to let us continue to lease the parking spots out while we figure this out because we didn't want to have, uh, traffic congestion, uh, when schools started back up at the end of August.
Now, can you do parking in addition to something else? This is going to be my final question. Can you do parking in addition to something else, or does it have to be all parking over there?
My understanding is going to be parking in, like similar to what Friendly's setup was with us for twenty-five, thirty years is, you know, we use it when we need it, and it's, it's available to them when we don't need it. And, um, that's, I'll, I'll defer that stuff to Tim Sheen if it's not a governmental entity.
Okay, so you, you were going to keep the same amount of perks?
Yeah, we're going to supply the school the thirty to forty parking spots that they needed so they don't have to worry about it. And then make sure that that's baked in no matter what, and then figure out is there an alternative use that will not add to the traffic on Sumner Ave.
Gotcha, yeah, we don't want to add to the traffic, so that makes sense. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what Councilor Letterman was asking, because I was a little bit confused, um, as to what he was saying. But I still support it, I still support it, guys, because it makes sense to me. It gets the folks off the street, and it makes sense. Councilor Davila, I'm going to give the floor to Councilor Hurst real quick because he hasn't spoken yet. And then I'm going to turn this meeting back over to you after I hear what he has to say, because I, I do have to get going.
That's fine. Good on you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, just a quick question. Madam Chair, for T J, um, T J, is this the normal process for a taking? I mean, do we normally do an appraisal and allow them, allow the sellers or the owners to do an appraisal and then meet in between? Is this, is that customary when we're getting ready to do a taking?
Yeah, great question. If you want to do a friendly eminent domain where we're not going to go to court, uh, it is, it is very normal. If you want to do a hostile taking, we could just go with our number and tell them to sue us. And we chose. We chose that a friendly was better than having to pay, uh, damages and attorney's fees if we lost. And right now the value keeps growing for the property and the quicker we can lock in, the better off we'll be.
Got it. Um, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, uh, first. Um, so TJ, just, uh. Staying on the finance aspect of it, of it, how much are we paying for the leasing of the parking spots right now?
I don't know. Pat Roach, you happen to have the number when we're paying, uh, off the top of your head? I can't remember.
Um, I'm gonna estimate it's about forty thousand a year. So we weren't paying for twenty-five years. We never paid to park there, right? Since they put the addition on the school and then the current ownership's charging us, it's a pretty good amount of money. I, I believe it's forty thousand, but I could be wrong.
Okay, and, uh, TJ, do you say that Realty Venture, how much did they appraise it at again?
Uh, they ascribed a value of six hundred thousand roughly to the, to that parcel in the portfolio that they purchased.
So I'm, I'm sorry, they purchased for six hundred, we appraised at seven twenty-two. Then we did another, we appraised a twen- nine twenty-five.
Correct.
How, how much was theirs?
One point three.
One point three million. Okay, and we offering one point?
We met in the middle as a way to avoid a hostile taking.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, right, financially, I have to say that, uh. It is what it is, right? Everything else going up, the, the house, the, the. It is what it is.
I spoke with them today. They're not gonna be heartbroken if we choose not to acquire the property. To potential long-term leasers, so.
Well, that brings me to my other point, TJ. Uh, I, I, I think financially things are starting to make a little bit more sense now, but I do have, uh. My concern is to the use of the property. Uh, I, I will say that the school itself, I mean, the building itself is gonna be used for. Virtual school, is that correct? Maybe a superintendent.
So we, uh, so we had to have a governmental purpose for the eminent domain taking. And that we wanted the building and sit in, in addition to the parking, the governmental purpose for the, for the order. Was just a potential virtual school or early education. Having said that, I've always been advised from council that we don't need to stick with that. If we have, uh, find another use, I'll, uh. You know, meeting with the, um, Civic Association, we determined is a different use, a different need. We wanna try. A restaurant, we wanna try something else. Um, I know they wanted a cafe. I mean, they're all things like. Once we own the property, we're in no rush, uh, to really figure out the need because right now that it's a dead old property with nothing in it. Everything of value has been auctioned off and, uh, removed.
So are you saying that even if we, uh, acquire this property, we're not gonna do anything until we talk to the neighborhood?
Uh, what I'm saying is I, I think the neighborhood has a right to have. Uh, ongoing dialogue with the city about what the use should be. Uh, and we, if we can control it, we better, we better have a chance to, to, to make everybody happy.
So the question, when do we have that dialogue? After we take it or before?
Can you, can you repeat the question?
So the question, the question that I'm struggling in my mind right now, TJ, is when do we have that dialogue? Do we have a dialogue before we approve that?
I would take the building, get it under our control and then have the dialogue without any rush. Because right now, if we don't take the building, they're gonna turn around and enter in a long-term lease and put a dry cleaner there. And I don't know if that's what the neighborhood wants.
Right, well, definitely whatever final decision is made, that's why I think is that, uh, we, we're actually going to, to be pretty adamant that we meet with the Forest Park Civic Association. And get their board's input, as you say, so that we got the appropriate use that makes sense for this neighborhood. Um, but let's, let's go back to that in a second. Um, the, the building itself, as you know, that's a historic area. Is the, the facade? Or the facade, facade of the building gonna be changed? Is it gonna look the same or?
Uh, I have no change in use other than it being a building that we can control. And once we determine the use, I don't believe we'll be changing the exterior for anything if it's a governmental purpose. Um, haven't even gotten that far.
Okay, very well. Uh, I will open up the floor to questions.
Council Hurst?
I think he had it up before. Yeah. Oh, you have a question, Council?
I do not. I just lowered my hand. Sorry.
Okay.
The one thing that I want us to be cautious of is the, these are owners of a property that. Can go either way. They're giving us a courtesy and a respect to work with us right now. To, um, make sure we have adequate parking. If we refuse this or deny it or extend it, they can go out and. Um, go with another owner and at that point, that owner does not have to allow us to use this parking. And at that point. We have more of a problem and a crisis than we currently have right now. So I, I just wanna caution counselors to just, you know. You know, be aware of that and if there's any way that we could hold a quick meeting with the Civic Association or the, um. The neighborhood group over there just to see what they think and their feedback. And I think Council Davia, you're the president.
Well, no, I'm the former president, but I think I agree with you actually.
Yeah, but time is really of the essence and they already held off from August to now. Um, to make a determination as to what they're gonna do with this. What I would hate for us to do is continue to drag our feet and then they go with another owner. And then we lose parking altogether and then that real crisis that we have to work out. So. That's just something that I wanted to say before I hop off. I keep saying I'm gonna hop off, but this is interesting to me. My dad is actually.
Yep.
Um, but I just wanted to make sure that I made that point because I know the neighborhood is important, but the neighborhood is gonna be even more upset. If that area of Sumner Ave become even more congested than it is right now. Council Hurst?
Quick question for TJ. Uh, we can take this property at any point in time, right? Like, I mean, just, just because they have plans on putting a dry cleaners there or. Whatever it is that they wanna put on, uh, put there. I mean, if we tell them that. You know, we're going to take it and it's gonna be a hostile taking used for a government purpose, then we can take it. Whenever we decide to take it, right? I mean, it probably.
Yeah, that is correct. Uh, the only difference is the value keeps going up and I just don't wanna miss an opportunity where they can ascribe.
You think values are going up right now?
Uh, they've gotten two inch, uh, long-term leasers that, uh, were not there since August. August, we were the only ones going to game in town.
Yeah, I'd be hard pressed if values are going up for them to sell it. I just don't believe that, um.
No, they're doing a long-term lease and I saw it.
But.
So I just, if they, if another appraisal comes in and goes up to one point five, we're gonna pay a little bit more. Or we go, or we go.
Yeah, I was about to say, if we wanna pay a little bit more, then we'll pay a little bit more, um, otherwise I, 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 I wouldn't. So if we did a hostile taking, then it would be for whatever we appraised it at, correct? Whatever, whatever.
It'd be for nine twenty-five and then we'd see them in court. And if we lost, we'd pay lawyers' fees and damages.
And then you would also pay what it is that they had it appraised at? Is that, is that right? Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Um, to Councilor Hurst's point, that is correct, but it's still a process. And so during the process, they can still lease it. People can still, they can still not want folks to park there. And during that time is gonna be chaos. And what happens during that time? Who are the residents gonna call? Probably, uh, Council Letterman and Council Davila. Because they're the one who's, um, most active probably and Council Walsh in that community. Um, so it's still gonna be a process and time that's gonna drag on. And we're going into the snowstorm. I think if we can avoid, um, those type of problems. We should do the best that we can to do so. Also, if they, um. Their values do go up for whatever reason, I don't think that that's gonna happen, but. Um, we already have this free cash transfer and it's sitting and waiting. So it's not like we gotta go into another budget. We don't have to go to reserves. We don't have to bond. We don't have to do any of that. The money is already there for this process. So. You know, if we can avoid some of that type of situation, that will also be helpful in my opinion.
Before I give the council the floor to Council Letterman, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, it is correct. I, as I said before, I acknowledge the real need of. Public safety for the parking or drop off, uh, pick up and drop off. Uh, but I'm extremely concerned that. Uh, we need to allow the Forest Park Civic Association and the borders to have a direct say on this because. Uh, myself as a work council, I'm getting calls. So people love this project or people hate it. So people think this is a great idea to solve the traffic issue, or the people hate it because they say they will potentially tax, lose tax base out of it. Um, so it, it, I'm getting the, you know, polarizing issue. Uh, regardless of what we decide, I wanna make sure that the people have the votes. And what I'm struggling right now is, uh, do we? You know, uh, I don't wanna be promised a pie in the sky and get then fussing over the lollipop. Uh, so I'm struggling, when do we bring the association into play here? Uh, but Council Letterman, uh, floor is yours. Uh, if you could please, uh, mute yourself if you're not speaking, please. I think it's Mr. Headson.
If you scroll over him, you can mute him.
Uh, where is that, uh, Council Letterman?
Scroll, if you scroll over his, uh, his box there and click the three dots, you should be able to click mute.
Got you. Okay, uh.
There we go.
Law is yours.
Thank you, Council Davila. Uh, TJ, first of all, tell the dog I said hello. I'm a big fan. Uh, the, uh, question I have is, is this something I'd rather, I just wanna kind of put into the conversation. I'll email Pat Sullivan about it too. Because it's really kind of more his department, um, in terms of facilities management. But the other thing that we. Uh, should do if we take the property is relocate the, uh. Dumpster area away from the residential butters, because I know over the years we've dealt with, uh, some concerns about the early hour. Uh, that the dumpster companies have arrived. And even though we, we've seen it pushed back. Um, on occasion, we're still seeing some four thirty, five AM pickups. Um, and even sometimes they push it back, but they only push it back to about six thirty, right? So, um, I would hope that that could be part of this. I think the commitment that I'm looking for though is just a, a one hundred percent clear commitment from the administration that. There will be no use assumed outside of the parking. Um, until a conversation has been had with the Civic Association and the opportunity for. A community RFP has been done. That, that's the, the clear commitment that I would need to be able to move forward.
I'm fine with that. I have no problem sitting down and having the conversation. Um, we'll have to manage expectations because this, because we want something there. Doesn't mean it's gonna shoot a walk and go there, but we could certainly try.
Yeah, and I, and I think that the argument of us being in control of it is a good one. Because otherwise we have no control over what goes there, right? Um, so if folks are willing to do long-term leases with others, they'd be willing to do long-term leases with us. Um, as, or, you know, potentially purchase off the part of the property that we don't need. So. So I think there's a positive opportunity for community development there as well as meet the needs, uh, of the school. So. Uh, you know, that, that's really my biggest, uh, question. Council Devil, when, do we know when the next FPCA meeting is? Is it before or after?
Uh, yeah, well, I think we're after we meet with the Forest Parks, after we meet, I think it's gonna be. October eleventh.
I think that is, um. Yeah, that's before our next city council meeting. That's before the, a city council meeting, this would be considered, because we could probably be considering this. October seventeenth.
Okay.
So we should, there should be time to talk to the Civic Association.
Okay, uh. Very well. So TJ Superintendent, is there something, uh, well, just to follow with Council Letterman saying that. Uh, if I heard correctly, there will be a commitment not to use the, the building. Uh, not to use the, the lot outside of parking needs. Uh, and to use the building until you have made with the Forest Park Civic Association, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, so I think then what I'm going to do, I'm gonna contact the, uh, president of the association, schedule a meeting. Uh, maybe a special meeting is entirely up to the president, uh, uh, to talk specifically, talk about this use. To, uh, for the property. Um, very well. Anything else, Council Letterman?
No, thank you.
Very well. And so, Council Hurst, you have any other question?
I do not.
Okay, um, so I post a question to you gentlemen, um. Trying to figure out, um. If we just move it up to the floor or we meet. Before the seventeenth or wherever on the seventeenth, uh, just to talk about, yeah, you know what? I think I'm gonna call on a meeting on this issue on the seventeenth of October. Just so that we can collectively talk about whether Forest Park Civic Association or how that meeting went, to make sure that we are all on the same page. Uh, so I'm going to call for another meeting on the seventeenth on this issue. Uh, October seventeenth, at same time at twelve thirty. Uh, so we can then, uh, if the, uh. Subcommittee desires that we can move it up to the, uh, to the floor. Um, Superintendent, sir, I will, um, it's one twenty now. Uh, I will leave you with the last word unless anybody else has any other question.
Thank you, Victor. I, we so appreciate the meeting and I, I always believe in. Making sure you've engaged the Civic Association. So I think that's a, a very good strategy always i- in any, uh, decisions. I will tell you that we need property besides the parking spaces. If we're gonna ensure the safety of our kids at arrival and dismissal every day. Present situation is, uh, I think Jim and his staff do a great job, but it's, it's far from ideal and. Like, the public safety is a real issue here as we talked about earlier. So I'll be advocating for, for folks thinking about that.
Very well. Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, very well. Unless, no, but there's no other questions. Uh, we will reconvene on the public safety meeting on October seventeenth at twelve thirty. The agenda item will be the following up on the, uh, uh, order taking of Friendly's at sixty-five Sumner Avenue. Uh, I will, uh, will give the, uh, Civic Association President a call. Ask him to set up a meeting to meet with Superintendent, uh, with DJ Plant, Pat Roach and, uh, the principal. Um, uh. Of the, uh, of the school. Uh, with that being said, uh, that will be with Principal McCann. Uh, no other questions, comments, thoughts? No, very well then. Gentlemen, uh, thank you for attending this meeting. It is now one twenty-two on this meeting center. Have a good day.